Okay. Good morning, everyone. Apologize to the gallery for our tardiness, but business to tend to. So we will try to move through. We have a very busy agenda with a number of presentations. I would ask that we rise for a moment of silent reflection. I would ask clerk for a rise and report from our in-camera session.
Thank you, Warden. I have five matters to report on. Council discussed and provided staff instructions with respect to the following five matters. One, ongoing appeals before the local planning appeal tribunal regarding the county's official plan. Two, the availability of property in the city of Sarnia. Three, proposed long-term lease agreement with at Bayside Centre in the city of Sarnia. Four, proposed collective agreement with between the county and owner for the nurses at Lampton Meadow View and North Lampton Lodge. And then lastly, council had a discussion over a proposed notice of motion concerning potential third-party review of the long-term care homes operations. Council decided on two matters, one of which is to release publicly the report that was drafted by Ms. Jane Joris for the in-camera session today to the November 27th meeting, table the motion to the November 27th meeting, and provide an additional report to council regarding the potential cost of a third-party review. Those are the matters I have to report.
Thank you. As I said, we have another number of presentations, but it's also our Take Our Kids To Work Day, an annual event that provides students with a glimpse into the working world. The day involves students in grade nine spending the day in the workplace of a parent, relative, friend, or volunteer to experience and learn the world of work. This year is the 25th anniversary of Take Our Kids To Work Day. We would like to welcome Tay Bedard, son of Kelly Bedard in Building Services, Ayla Coates, daughter of Kevin Coates in the libraries, and Bryce Duffy, son of Mike Duffy, Public Works, who are with us today. Welcome and stand up to be recognized. Thank you. Glad you came. So all these presentations that we have to go through, I think I'm going to come out front and read them. And I do have a cold, so I'm not going to shake any hands. I'm going to try to be as not spread it around. So if we go through the presentations, I'll... Hello? Oh, well, there you are. There, you can hear me. How better? Start off with the, we have the Sarnia Community Foundation. Sarnia Community Foundation connects people who care about their community and those who are doing the most good in the community. They give donors the flexible and practical way to show their support for causes they care about. In February of 2019, the Sarnia Community Foundation presented Lampton Circles with a donation of $15,000 from an anonymous donor. Lampton Circles is sincerely grateful for their generous monetary gift. These funds support Circles leaders who are low-income families or individuals leading their way out of poverty with the help from Lampton Circles staff and allies. On behalf of Lampton Circles, community, and the county of Lampton, we thank Jane Anima, Executive Director of the Sarnia Community Foundation, and their donors for investing in lives of local families. Yeah, come on up and... Thank you. We have North Lampton Lodge Auxiliary. The Lodge's auxiliary operates a tuck shop and provides a wonderful welcome to new residents and many other activities throughout the year for the people of the lodge. The auxiliary members purchase iPads and accessories for use by people living in the home and host weekly ice cream days. The much-needed new common area furniture is a result of the auxiliary's efforts. The home is a beautiful and comfortable place in large part because of the support from the North Lampton Lodge Auxiliary. On behalf of Lampton County Council and staff, thank you Heather Cuthridge and Joan Rawlings from the North Lampton Lodge Auxiliary for your generous donations and ongoing support. Please come forward and receive this. The Marshall Gowan Manor Auxiliary. MGM's auxiliary worked very hard to get charitable status for over the past 12 months and have finally been successful. Their members have done lots of fundraising and were able to make a number of purchases for the home. Purchases include two new barbecues, a portable freezer, and a beautiful new Christmas tree and decorations. The auxiliary was instrumental in getting a new tuck shop up and running. The people living in the home are thrilled with having the auxiliary working to improve the care and services provided at the manor. On behalf of Lampton County Council and staff, thank you Jackie Miller and Marshall Gowan Manor Auxiliary for your generous donations and ongoing support for the people at the manor. Lampton Meadow View Villa Auxiliary has funded several special events each and every year. Some of these events include a bus trip, Zumba classes, music presentations, and weekly ice cream days. The auxiliary members arrange flowers for birthdays, new residents, Christmas, Easter, and Mothers' and Fathers' Day. Everyone is invited to the monthly fundraising luncheons, the auxiliary hosts at the villa. The Villa auxiliary members can often be found baking or preparing some sort of treats in the auditorium. The people who live at the villa appreciate all the special things provided by the auxiliary. On behalf of County Council and staff, thanks to Helen Gilfoyle and the Lampton Meadow View Villa Auxiliary for your generous donations and ongoing support of the villa. So Lampton Public Health Services. The Student Nutrition Program offers free healthy food to over 8,100 students in 39 schools in Lampton County. The generosity of the following donations ensures that Lampton students are well-nourished and ready to learn every day at school. We have Nova Chemicals. On behalf of the Student Nutrition Program and the county of Lampton, thank you Megan Lawrence and Nova Chemicals for your generous donation of $5,000 to the St. Kirt Township Student Nutrition Program. Could have put all these three together and we'll get everybody up at once and take a big picture. So Teltec Community Foundation. On behalf of the Student Nutrition Program and the county of Lampton, thank you Melanie Mickle-Gilmore and the Teltec Community Foundation for your generous donation of $5,000 directly to 39 student nutrition programs. Also, we have Noel's Gift. Noel's Gift have been consistent funder of the Student Nutrition Program since 2014 and has collectively provided over $100,000 directly to student nutrition programs to support the purchase of healthy foods. On behalf of the Student Nutrition Program and the county of Lampton, thank you to Nicole Pupet and Noel's Gift for your generous donations and ongoing support. If we could have those individuals come forward. We also have some other recognitions. In the Cultural Services Division for the library, Elva Ruth Keys for their generous request to the Brights Grove Library, and Otto and Kathleen Schmidt for the generous request on behalf of the Children's Department at the Petroya Public Library, also known as the Robert M. Nickel Library. Recognizing contributions to the gallery, John Orvac and Marissa Minardi for their generous donation of three works of art for the collection, as well as a monetary donation. Kelly Wallace for the generous donation of work of art for the collection. Henry Kornielson for the generous donation of five works of art for the collection. And the Fleck Law Charitable Fund, Carl Fleck and Pascal Dano, for the generous monetary donation for the benefit of the Art Acquisition Reserve Fund. Also, at the museums, Lampton Heritage Museum would like to acknowledge the following donations. Stuart Loriman, donation of the conservation of the Goodson Steam Tractor Engine. Charles Fairbank Oil Properties Limited for the generous donation to be used for wagon rides and for the Robert Cochrane Memorial Fund. And once again, Ron Van Horn, our CAO, for the generous donation artifacts for the collection. Those are all very special part of Lampton County. The generosity of the people throughout the county that make this a great place. And we extend our, once again, our thanks to all those volunteers and all those people that generously give of themselves. Thank you. With that, we have a delegation, item number eight A. And I would invite Mike LaPain, President and CAO of Blue Water Health, to come forward. If we have a motion to allow him presentation within the bar, counselor hand and counselor loosely. All in favor of that? That is carried. Thank you. Welcome, Mike.
Should it be on, oh, there it is. There it went. There it is. Okay, so typically I'd be here bringing news from Blue Water Health. I'd like, we like to try to do that a couple of times a year, but today I thought it was very timely that we talk about Ontario health teams. So that slide is actually a bit of a misrepresentation. It's not Blue Water Health. I'm actually here, I'll say I'm here today on behalf of the Steering Committee of the Sarnia-Lampton Ontario Health Team. I'm chairing the Steering Committee for the process of developing an Ontario health team here in Lampton. And I just want to talk about a little bit of the rationale and the thinking behind what Ontario health teams are and what it really means for Lampton County and really what the plan is for how we're going to start to assemble this. So I'll just quickly talk about, just briefly. We've had Medicare in Canada for over 60 years. Medicare was set up back when acute illness was very pervasive and hospitals and doctors were largely at the core of the Canada Medicare Act. And it's, one could argue, it's largely outdated. The Medicare really hasn't evolved as quickly as the needs of patients in our current climate. Now what we see is healthcare as many people, the pervasiveness of chronic disease, and people living, quite frankly, the average life expectancy is extended considerably. So the idea is to try to imagine or think about what would a new healthcare system look like if it was designed for today's needs rather than the needs of what was in place in Canada 50 or 60 years ago. So the ministry's vision for Ontario health teams, I've put down a list, and this is right out of one of their documents. I'm not necessarily going to read through it, but I'll say this is sort of an overview. That Ontario health teams, so the first thing is that LINS are being supplanted and replaced with these Ontario health teams as the organizing facilitator for health services in any given region. The idea behind an Ontario health team is that they actually act like an accountable, in the United States they call them accountable care organizations. In Britain, they call them integrated healthcare networks. But how do you take, here in Lampton County, the LIN funded over 40 different agencies. And that doesn't even include those agencies that aren't funded by the LIN, like EMS, like public health, like some aspects of long-term care, like St. Clair Child and Youth, like all our social services that interact with our patients. So if you're a patient requiring care in Lampton County, it's conceivable you could be interacting with up to over 50 different agencies. So there's a lot of disjointedness in how patients receive care. And part of the idea is, could it be, could it be better organized when you step back and look at the entirety of what's happening? So the idea is, in its full maturation, that an Ontario health team will actually have one funding envelope. So imagine those 40 agencies all come together as one funding envelope. And over time, what will happen is the governing structure of that will determine how best to strategically allocate those funds. So what we see too frequently, it's not unique to Lampton, you see it across Ontario. You'll often see homeless people residing in an acute-care hospital bed because it's their only alternative. An acute-care hospital bed, I would argue, is the most expensive bed in the community. Is that good care? We see all kinds of alternate level of care patients in a hospital on any given day. We frequently see many people accessing the emergency department for services that are best, would be better served outside the walls of the hospital. The notion that one single envelope could better manage care is based on the premise that the hospital is, quite frankly, the most expensive place to provide care. And when you have a care happening in a hospital that is not necessarily needed to be provided in a hospital, we're actually squandering precious resources. So the idea is putting together these 40, 50 different agencies in a more rational way. Can we better or more efficiently allocate healthcare dollars? So interestingly, today, we're starting a work group. So I'm not going to read through that, but let's say some of the key premises are that you have to pick a defined geographic area. And what we know is 95% of people in Lampton County would get 95% of their care within Lampton County. So we think Lampton County nicely represents the idea of an Ontario health team. The other piece is 24/7 access is really important and one of the underpinnings of an Ontario health team. And frequently now, the 24/7 access usually means a hospital emergency department. They really want to invest in digital health. Healthcare is woefully behind many other industries in how we use digital care, how we use virtual care, how we can unleash the power of technology to better manage what many patients experience. And we need to look at a new way of measuring outcomes. You know, traditionally, what we do is just measure volumes. And that's sort of like a run, fix, and redo-it approach to healthcare as opposed to looking at it holistically and trying to actually move upstream to try to curb some of the demand on healthcare, which we know is oftentimes rooted in socioeconomic and demographic issues. So today, these are the eight building blocks for the OHT. Again, I can provide these slides, but in the interest of time, I won't go through them all. But they basically describe each of the criteria, the eight criteria that the ministry will be using in determining who will become an Ontario health team. What we've done locally is, this is our project overview, and it's a complicated slide. But really, what those pieces and what those working groups. We've delegated about eight working groups, and each of those working groups are going to be delivering one of their criteria that was, I just outlined on the previous slide. Interestingly, today, they begin their work. Many of the working, one of the working groups is actually meeting right now. And there's going to be a series of think tanks where each of the working groups come together and talk about how to do service delivery, or how we're going to measure performance, how we're going to use digital health. How will the funding work? And at the end of it all, how will governance, how will decision-making happen? What will the governance structure look like? It's a unique approach because right now, it's been, the Ontario approach is unique in that elsewhere in Canada, when they've transformed healthcare and created regional health authorities or these types of things, it's usually been a directive. And it's been directed from the government. And what the experience has been in other jurisdictions is that when that happens, there's a lot of ill will created because here in Ontario, as you can imagine, what works in downtown Toronto may not work in northern Ontario, it may not work in Lampton County. So it's very difficult to centrally direct what it should look like in each of the individual areas. So here in Ontario, they've taken this approach where they're going to give each of the areas the license to create what they think would best serve their given populations. It's unique, it's voluntary at this point. Nobody is compelled to belong to an Ontario health team. But right now, we have at least two dozen agencies involved in these working groups. There are over 72 individuals that will be sitting on these various working groups over the next couple of days. We have the three indigenous communities involved. We have over 12 patient experience partners providing the perspective of patients and how they experience the healthcare system. And the idea is to draw up a blueprint or a roadmap for how we go forward. Being designated an Ontario health team doesn't necessarily mean you're finished. Being designated as an Ontario health team is sort of the first step of an evolution. This is arguably the biggest transformation we've seen in healthcare in a generation. And the idea is that we're really completely changing the way people, the way agencies interact with one another and the way patients can access the system. The system with so many different agencies right now is probably characterized by its disjointedness. And patient navigation is a key issue and a key problem in the current system. So is there a way to... So is there a way to better rationally organize it? So it's easier for patients and their families to deal with whatever unique circumstance they find themselves in. And I think the real opportunity is pushing the envelope beyond just the healthcare envelope because we know so many of our patients, what they really require goes into the realm of social services and getting the community and social service sector involved. So we believe this is a really exciting time. There is wonderful opportunity to really make a transformational change for patients, and we believe Lampton County is nicely geographically and demographically situated to be an Ontario health team. So that's the quick overview. We could talk, I could talk at length, because I've still got a minute left. It's usually, I'm looking at the clock, thinking I'm going to run out of time. So I gladly open it up to questions because I'm sure many of you have questions about it, and in fairness, this is in its infancy. We like to say that there are still more questions than answers. There really haven't been any Ontario health teams, there's been some designated, but they're still in the planning stage. So we don't really know what it's going to look like, and I think, I don't think there's a master plan in behind. I think that they're waiting to see organically how these things can grow in their various communities, and they're looking for innovative, unique and interesting plans to come from the various sectors in Ontario. So I'll just, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions? councillor Han.
Presentation, that was informative. It is a complicated process. Do you have any idea on the length of time until you get a decision on if Lampton County can be a health team? And the second part is, you said some have already been confirmed, so of the 10, some are confirmed?
There are 31 that have been designated to move forward to what's called full application. So that means they've been sort of, the process is you have to fill out a self-assessment. Here in Lampton County, the first self-assessments went out in April, and we actually strategically decided not to put in a self-assessment. At that time, we hadn't engaged all our partners, so we decided we'd wait for the second wave. So those in the, there's been 31 groups in the first wave who've been designated to move on to full application. Our plan here locally is, we expect to have the full application completed by the end of November. The next wave is due December 4th, so we will put in a self-assessment. Then they look at your self-assessment, they look at the inclusiveness, they look at how widespread is the net, like in other words, who's been involved? Do you have all the key players involved? I should point out, I forgot this last slide, probably, look, those are the key sectors they're looking for, and really, on an Ontario health team, they want to see at least three of those sectors involved in your self-assessment. Once they look at the merits of your self-assessment, they then move you on to full application. And full application is a big deal, like the self-assessment's relatively straightforward, the full application is a complete business plan. We've engaged a third party to do that because what we've learned from the people in the first wave, it was way, it was a lot more work than they anticipated, and they give you 10 weeks to do it. So we're actually working on our full application, the work groups today are actually working towards a full application. So even though we're sort of ahead, we're putting the cart before the horse, but we're going to actually be working on full application before our self-assessment's even been accepted, but it gives us time to properly vet the full application before it goes in. But when you look at all those different agencies around an Ontario health team, we have representation from all six of them in our team. Like, so we believe we're being very inclusive, as I said, we've included a lot of patients in this, and the indigenous communities are also involved.
Okay. councillor White.
Thank you for the presentation today. And I understand, Mr. LaPaine, that this is kind of like a really, really large log that you've just begun to visualize the whittling process down to an actual, you know, tangible and reasonably cohesive-looking system. At this point, are you foreseeing one of the outcomes being shared, like resource sharing in terms of like records and data management, HR services, those types of things? Or what types of services are you anticipating seeing the collective sharing?
We're on now. So there is, there has been some degree of sharing already. Like, I'll give you an example. Blue Water Health, we have a vice president of mental health that actually is also the vice president in the Canadian Mental Health Association, CMHA. So she boasts, basically, we're sharing that resource across both because we know that patient population spends more time in the community than they do in the acute care sector. Similarly, with the hospice, just this week, we've announced that we will have a shared management agreement with the hospice because many of the palliative patients in the hospital also are in the hospice, and having them move back and forth seamlessly between the two organizations just makes a lot of sense. That's just a small snippet of what should really be happening across the sector. With 40 different agencies, there are 40 different executive directors, 40 different boards, they're all well-intentioned, they all do very noble work. But when you step back and look at it from a system point of view, are we, are we best organizing and able to put as much resource on the front line as possible? So that's part of the discussion that occurs. In the first year, nobody's funding, everybody's funding envelope stays the same. What happens over time, and like I said, in the first year, it's just basically the baby steps. The discussions and the governance discussions, how will we make decisions, how will we organize ourselves, sort of come later, but the belief is that there is a lot of resource that could be reallocated to the front line. So the answer to your question is, yeah, we hope to, a lot of the back office, a lot of the digital health, a lot of the support service type pieces in the system could be consolidated to just free up resource. The government's been very clear that there's no new resource, but we know that there's always increasing demand. So we have to, you know, necessity is the motherhood of invention, you have to keep trying to figure out how you can do more with less, and this is all part of the discussion we'll be having.
councillor Ronbooke and councillor Stark.
I'm very excited about this initiative. I think it's a good step forward. I'm wondering how the municipalities can help in partnership with this to move our assessment forward.
So, so as I stated, many, many of our healthcare needs aren't really healthcare-related. What we see at the hospital frequently are social service issues. It's no secret that high users of the healthcare system are people that have socioeconomic backgrounds, so that group needs a lot of support. Homelessness and housing is a critical factor, and particularly, we see this a lot in our mental health population, that oftentimes why they're in the hospital is they have housing or homelessness issues. So we believe that it's actually, it's not a healthcare issue so much as it's a complete community issue, dealing with many of these upstream issues. It's interesting, the University Health Network, and I was just reading this morning, one of the biggest healthcare insurers in the United States are now buying up apartment blocks to house homeless patients because it's, they're finding, the economics is, it's cheaper to do, to provide housing for homelessness than it is to just react to them coming into the healthcare system, and there's great economic models showing that. So I think the communities play a huge role in helping the system sustain itself. We have great examples in Petroya, where that Ontario, that family health team, I should say, has reached out in the community, and they're doing some proactive interventions with patients. Patients that they see are going to be potentially high-needs patients, and they're actually intervening beforehand, so there's a line that it takes a community to raise a child, it also takes a community to keep a patient healthy. So I think that this holistic approach is what we hopefully will be evolving towards.
councillor Stark.
There we go. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm particularly pleased that you put up this last chart because it brings home the concept of how the county interacts. So I'm looking at your blocks there, and I see long-term care, I see home care, community care, I see mental health addiction, all of which we have a part to play in that. So my question is, as the facilitator of this proposal or this group, how much interaction have you had with respect to the county's people? Or conversely, have the county's different representatives been part of your structural discussion?
Well, actually, there are several employees of the county that sit on these working groups. And we, actually, what's not up there, and probably should be, although it's not technically part of it, is public health. And public health has been engaged as well. We see public health is sort of, in its full maturation, what an Ontario health team should be doing is population health management. You know, what we do is we react, and it's more transactional. Population health management is where you actually get long-term benefit, and I think public health in particular would play, would play a big role in that. But there are people in the building, in the room today that are part of these working groups that are county employees, so we see a lot of interaction with the county. EMS, public health, long-term care, social services, there's a lot of interaction there, so I think the county plays, will be playing a very big role in this. And we don't know how this will all, it's called a no-rules environment, but there are still lots of rules baked into legislation. There's the Public Hospitals Act, there's the Long-Term Care Act, there's the Home Care Act, there's the HIPAA, which is the Privacy Act, there's PRCERTA, which is the Labor Relations Act. There are lots of pieces of legislation that get in the way, and there's talk of having enabling legislation to have that happen, but we may find that there are different ways that these different services get funded. I'm lucky, I see Steve up there, that there was this great, the Great Community Paramedic Program is a wonderful example of a pilot case that occurred over the summer, and that's maybe the sort of thing that should be grown or should be exploited when you start to look at how to better manage and fund healthcare. What's a better idea? We've been locked into how it's always been done for several decades, and this is sort of, if you could imagine a different way of delivering it, what would it look like? And we do have that opportunity right now.
councillor White.
Thank you, Warden. So what I really like about this is that you're really discussing some of the, like the critical issues that do fall well outside of your current catchment area in terms of services. I think the difficulty, and I'm really just highlighting this at this point, when you touch on things like homelessness, that is such a critical issue in our community as it is across the province, I think one of the difficulties we're going to have is as you address and identify the needs and the potential solutions and what savings that may present to the healthcare system, it's really going to then redirect, I think in some regard, the responsibility to another agency such as the County of Lampton, who would deal with affordable housing, yet it would not necessarily transfer an allotment of funds to allow the county to do that. So it's my hope that when you do identify issues like that, and you're able to identify a cost savings to that, that you would be a partner in advocating so that the county could receive additional support from the province to be able to provide additional services.
So the idea of an integrated funding envelope really starts to look at that. With so many different agencies, with so many different mandates, with so many different boards and accountabilities and their own budgets, is part of the siloed system that we have. We have countless examples of patients being stuck in a hospital for the weekend, they can't get home care services, there are no PSWs available. You have three patients that needed the basic PSW home care service that's not available for the weekend, so they stay in the hospital at $1,500 a day for three patients for three days. Is that where we should be putting the resources or should we reallocate it differently? But the reason that happens is there's different budgets, different accountabilities, people have limits to where their budgets go. So by having integrated funding, I think you start to solve some of those systemic, systemic barriers that are just put in place because of all the different agencies that we have to interact with. Yes, the county overlapped with some, and some of what you do is outside the healthcare envelope, but that's really, we need the, when you get in, when we get further down the road and we start talking about the governance discussion, how we share, what agencies really do we bring into the fold becomes part of that whole discussion. So how can we better or more intelligently manage the resources that we have rather than have it in blocks of different organizations?
Okay, thank you. councillor Bradley.
Mr. LaPaine, there's been many changes to the healthcare system, all promising progress. How do you measure this? How do you measure this in a sense of knowing where those offsets are, where the changes are, and where the benefits are? That to me is the biggest part, even looking at your chart. How in the end, three years from now, five years from now, how we know, how will we know that this, the measurability factors are there that we can judge this has been a good direction?
There are, there are lots of measures in place right now, but they are historical. And part, one of the working groups right now is performance measurement. How will you, as a system, know you're performing better? A lot of the metrics right now that they will be looking at are hospital-centric, only from the point of view of ending hallway medicine is one of the mantras of this government. And hospitals are sort of the default for the system when patients fall through the crack. So being able to depopulate hospitals in terms of the types of patients that are in hospitals and could have care elsewhere would be one of the measures they'd be looking at. It's true, when you move upstream and you start looking at the social determinants of health, and how can, if you better manage that, where are the savings? That's really long-term. Like, if we waved a magic wand and had everybody that quit smoking tomorrow, you wouldn't see any impact on the healthcare system for probably 10 or 20 years. So many of the measures will be long-term in nature, some will be short-term, like I said, the hospital-centric ones. How quickly can patients access home care? How quickly can patients access primary care when they require it? These would be some of the first measures that get put into place, but I think in the longer term, they're looking at population health outcomes as the true measure of how well are you managing it from a system perspective? Too much of what we measure today is by an individual organization's perspective, and it doesn't take the system view, so that will shift over time.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Let's see how this comes together, and looking forward to improvements.
Thank you for having me, and we hope to bring back some updates as we progress.
That'd be great. Minutes. Item number nine, October 2nd, minutes of open council session moved by councillor White, seconded by Epiwarden Marriott. Any questions on October 2nd minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item 10, we have three pieces of correspondence. Item A is dealing with a notice of motion. councillor Bradley?
I'll move the motion. It came from Sarnia council, and all this does is ask for a review, I would say a very high-level review of the merits of this, and I believe it's modeled on a similar project in London, Ontario. And I have read mixed reviews of that particular project, but I think this just moves it forward saying, across the county, bringing together a number of parties to look at a job task force, and I think it's a good initiative.
I didn't understand the motion, sorry. We're dealing with the correspondence? It's just a letter? I would say we received that letter. There was another motion further on in the minutes. Was there not dealing with? No?
My motion was to endorse the letter and to ask for a report on the merits of this proposal.
Okay, is there a second or for that motion? councillor Stark.
I agree that this needs more study, but I also would ask the mover to amend to include a reference to the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership for their comments.
There's missions during this, in this request, but it is in there. councillor Stark.
However, I've read further, I see the inclusion. So yes, I'll second the motion, understanding that includes the parties that I'm interested in.
Great. Any other questions? councillor White. Great. Any other questions? Counselor White?
Thank you. With regards to item B, the letter from Counsel Bradley.
We had to deal with the motion that's on the floor.
We're just dealing with, sorry, overtaking all at once.
Correct? So that's been moved and seconded, that we support that resolution? All in favor of that? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Item B, Counsel White?
Thank you, Warden. Just curious, so are we looking for a motion on that to receive a report? And if so, when could we expect that?
Counselor Bradley?
When I sent the letter, it was to ask for an update today, a high-level update. I was told that that is, was feasible and was going to happen. And the reason this letter was prompted this way was that constantly dealing almost daily with groups, individuals recognizing the nature of the homeless crisis being beyond the past and looking to be proactive. And last year, we were reactive, including myself, because of the very bitter weather and the fact that both homes were in Sarnia were over capacity. So simply looking for an update at this point, and then perhaps at the next meeting, what additional things can we do beyond what we've been doing today? And then what are the costs and who would do it? That's all.
We could ask Mr. Calasante to provide an update on where we are in this process?
Certainly, I can do that through you, Warden, to Counsel Bradley. So the County of Lampton is the Consolidated Service System Manager for a number of services, including housing and homelessness. And basically, our role is to ensure that the systems are in place and the programs are in place to help those in need in our community. And as you noted, Counsel Bradley, there certainly has been more of a challenge to find affordable housing in Lampton County in the last couple of years, and particularly in the city of Sarnia. We're certainly not alone in that. I think if you pick up the newspaper, we're seeing that in City of Windsor, City of London, a lot of places. And in 2017, the federal government announced the very first national housing strategy because we're facing these issues across Canada. So as a service system manager, we're tasked with providing a full spectrum of services under the Housing and Homelessness Continuum, which includes emergency housing, transitional housing, housing supports and services, things like hospitals to homes, homeownership. So the county receives just over $3 million in funding from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to address some of these issues. And that's specifically under our Community Homeless Prevention Initiative and Home for Good Initiative. The county on top of that provides almost an additional $400,000 in levy for homelessness prevention initiatives. And that's in addition to the $4 million a year for 10 years that the county has provided to upgrade our affordable housing, which of course, the best way out of homelessness is to have, you know, housing that's safe and affordable. So certainly, we're putting an awful lot of money into the community in homeless prevention. Do we need more? Absolutely. Are we going to get more from the province? Not this year. So we have to really look at the dollars we have and what's the best way to use those dollars. So where does that funding go? Basically, we started looking at homelessness prevention around 2014, which is fairly new in the social service world. We really just looked at emergency services before and not setting up prevention, which I think we heard from Blue Water Health this morning, that's so important, that we start looking at upstream programming and the root causes and collecting some data on why are people presenting as homeless in our community. And it's not just because there's a lack of affordable housing. It's quite a spectrum of issues. So we provide the dollars to numerous community agencies. So the Inn of the Good Shepherd certainly is one for the two shelters they run. Leo receives some dollars for the Hospital to Homes program. Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul, North Lampton Community Health Center receives dollars. CMHA receives significant dollars. So there's a bit more, and certainly I can provide an overview of that at our next council meeting. But basically, the chipping dollars were mandated to reduce reliance on emergency shelters and services and start to increase the homelessness prevention. So last year, you're right, we tried to get ahead of the issue. And the Lynn actually provided $40,000 to the Inn of the Good Shepherd to provide additional emergency services. The county then provided another 40. So we spent $80,000, which in some ways was really a Band-Aid. We didn't start to look at what are the root causes. And the province has advised us that we need to reduce the amount of money we're spending on shelters and increase the preventative measures. So we have put a lot of measures in place this year. We've increased our funding to Canadian Mental Health Association. And they work at the shelter to try and divert clients from going there, to provide them with housing. We also heard this morning from Blue Water, it's very expensive to keep someone in the hospital. It's also very expensive to keep someone in a shelter. It's much better to provide them with some affordable housing, portable housing benefit or an RGI allowance. And that is doable. So we have provided the Inn with some additional dollars to look at some of those preventative methods. Again, I think they'll take a little bit of time, but it will take some time to get these programs to start working. I feel fairly confident that the additional supports we've put into place, we will start to see some of those outcomes. I think most of you also know we've hired VINC Consulting to do an update of our 10-year housing and homeless plan. That was initially approved in 2014. We've learned a lot since then. We've put a lot more dollars and process into our homelessness prevention. That report will be finished by the end of 2019. I believe all of your communities have had an opportunity to comment on that. It'll be going to the ministry for a review and then it'll come back to council for final approval, I believe at our February meeting, because there's not a meeting in January. In the meantime, we're still certainly working on all of those programs. Few other things that we've done at a county level is we've hired a manager of homelessness prevention in our social planning area to specifically focus on this issue, to start to really look at, are the systems working together? Because again, we're putting a lot of money out into the community, but are they all working together? We really need to start to look at the data. Who's staying in our shelter? Are the same people moving from place to place? Are they receiving dollars through Ontario Works for an apartment that they're choosing not to stay at? Are they leaving addiction programs and choosing to stay there? So are we double paying? So some of those things, we're really taking a good look at. So I'm hoping with all of those systems in place and some other checks and balances, that we won't run into the issues we did last year. If we do, we do have some things in place through the Inn. We also have, our Ontario Works staff are able to provide emergency shelter in motels. That's certainly not a great way to deal with homelessness. But if we put someone into a motel and then we wrap the supports around them, why are they living there? You know, what's preventing them from having their own home? Start to put those supports in place. I think we'll start to see a reduction in the numbers that are presenting, both in the Emerge and at some of the other agencies. So that's certainly our hope.
Okay, thanks for that update. Follow-up, Counselor Bradley?
Take the in-depth response. That's exactly what I was, I think we were looking for, for the community. However, I do think these major structural things you're trying to achieve are very, very long-term and very difficult to achieve. And that's the immediate concern. I just anecdotally witnessing it continually about people for various reasons, much larger numbers than the past. So I just want to be prepared as a county council. If you need more resources, what would those resources be? To deal with the immediate. And I recognize what you're doing on the longer midterm stuff. So I just think you shouldn't be hesitant to ask us, because we do not meet in December or in January. And that's when we hit the crisis last year. So I would hope when you come back to us in November, that you would give us some emergency, emergency guidance, if needed. And if not needed, that is fine. So I would hope that would be what you would turn back with.
Certainly. I mean, it's hard to come up with a specific number, because we don't know what our numbers are going to look like. And we don't know exactly how well the preventative programs are working. But we always have the backup of, Ontario Works can provide emergency assistance to anyone in need. So we have those dollars available. They're 100% provincial dollars. As long as someone is low-income and presents in need, we have those dollars available to us through the Ontario Works program.
Counselor White?
Thank you. So I guess more specifically, and perhaps this is what would come at the next meeting, I'd be interested to know how many people, because as you indicated, there are people who will go from shelter to shelter, perhaps couch surfing and so on. Do you have any tangible measure of those who are not even doing so much as that, who may be sleeping in the parks, may be sleeping in behind buildings? Because we know that that exists. And if you know where they are, how are you reaching out to them? And what is the plan currently to assist in providing safe, warm shelter for this coming season?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor White. We don't have an exact number, but we did do an enumeration earlier this year. I can put those numbers back into the report for next council meeting. We are reaching out to those people through all of our preventative methods. So if they're presenting at shelter, we're trying to work with them. However, when we did our enumeration, we didn't get what's called a by-name list. And that's where we would list all of those clients. We just did sort of an anonymous, excuse me, enumeration. We've now started a data system where we will be gathering those people's names and we are able to track what they're doing. We're just in the beginning phases. We've reached out to the federal government to assist us with that. It's a program called HIFIS that's used in most communities. So it will take us a little while to get that database up and running and to populate it. But I think it's really important that, yeah, we know exactly who these people are. And without gathering that information, we're a little bit at a loss this year. But we do have our original enumeration numbers. And they were fairly significant. It was over 100 persons in our community. So we know we do have an issue and we need to be working with those people.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Just appreciate all the information. I think it's great. But if you're a homeless person or if you have mental health issues, how do these people know what's available? And I think when we visit different areas, larger centers, our own centers, and it's how do the folks cross that line to know that there is some help there for them? Because a lot of times, they're the lost of society. They don't know where to go, how to get there, what resources are available. And I think that's one of the things, I guess, I'm looking forward to see in the November 27th thing. Because as it was brought up, this is going to be the cold time of year. And this is where the majority of people have major, major issues. But how do we get them to cross that bridge? And I'm hoping that we see some strategies around that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item C, correspondence, Town of Petroya, Counselor Loosely?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. But I'd like to just let council know that I'd like to refer this letter to, or address this during the committee PM minutes. Item number six, requiring reports, requiring a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion that the correspondence be received, Counselor Bradley and Counselor Miller? All in favor of that? That is carried. Item number 11, Creative County Minutes, motion to receive information. Deputy Warden Marriott and Counselor Miller, all in favor? That's carried. Do you want to go through the minutes or do we need a break? Keep going? Sorry, sorry, Lonny. Committee AM minutes? Call on Counselor Arnold.
Warden Weaver, members of County Council, I would just like to present the AM Committee Minutes of October 16th for your consideration.
Thank you. Item one, Infrastructure and Development, correspondence. Item two, Lampton Pollinator Program. Item three, Revisions to County Emergency Response Plan. Item number four, Winter Operations Plan. Item number five, Hazardous and Special Waste Program. Public Health Services. Item six, Correspondence. Item seven, Information Reports. Item eight's regarding defibrillator battery packs. Item nine, Impacts on Vaping and E-Cigarettes. Item 10, Healthy Aging Supports. Cultural Services Division, item one, Donation Report. Item 11, actually, is the addition. Item 12, Libraries Donation Report. Item 13 is Adjournment. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I move this day's minutes for acceptance, as is.
Seconded by Counselor Loosely. All in favor of that? That is carried. Thank you. We have PM Committee Minutes, Counselor Bean?
Thank you, Warden. The committee met on October 16th. And I present these minutes for your consideration.
Thank you. Long-Term Care Division, item one is Correspondence. Item two is Information Reports. Corporate Service Division, item three, Information Reports. Item four is the County Treasurer Appointment. Finance Facilities, item five is Information Reports. Item six is the Proposed Phase-Out of Vacancy Rebates. Counselor Loosely?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to recommend that this council consider an amendment to that motion to eliminate the vacancy rebates the end of 2019 instead of the end of 2020. And if I get a second or for that, I'd like to speak to that.
Seconded, Counselor Cook. Counselor Loosely?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Warden, I think this has been discussed in our community for some time. I think, and I think at one time, it was a good thing. I think as the previous treasurer mentioned, there are options now through MPAC where owners, et cetera, of these buildings can already apply or appeal their taxes for getting rebates regarding empty buildings already. So I think our council directed me to bring this forward because they felt it's gone on long enough. The county never did start the phasing-out process. So I think it's important to put this to the end. And I was also informed, I think we all were with the treasurer at the last meeting, that it can be done, that there's time to complete this. And I'd like to request a recorded vote, too, please.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Bradley?
Warden here, in the last term, it was delayed for two years. It was pushed back on the basis, and there was quite a strong, Counselor Bushy was just reminding, quite a strong business lobby from the people that had vacant properties. But we pushed it back to this timeframe for a very simple reason. We were giving them notice. This was coming to an end. And, but we would give them time to make the transition. So I certainly can now support this. It's the right thing to move forward and to bring some fairness to the tax system. And again, Sarnia will, we have the, probably the biggest number of properties will be affected by this. But they were given fair notice through the county to prepare for the end of this rebate. So I'm certainly going to support your motion.
Counselor Hand?
My community is in favor of ending the process, allowing this program. But my concern is, and I was here, and there was significant opposition from the business community and the chamber, I remember. All I'm concerned about is when we make a commitment to tell a group that we're going to do a phased-in approach, and then we renege on that. Is that the case? Like, are they understanding that it's done in 2020? Is this going against what we committed back to those people at that time?
Counselor Loosely?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is, I don't think that was ever, I don't think they were informed of that. I think we started with that. But my understanding with the treasurer at the last meeting was, they never really started. So they were never really informed that we were going to do this. But I, I mean, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong.
Do we have any, any background on that? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Through the warden. My understanding with my discussions with your previous treasurer, Mr. John, is, is that that process did not start. I know there was a resolution of council on May 1st where the phase-in reductions were 33%, 66%, and 100% by 2021. There were some complications regarding with the province and the education rate, which is why you got the 50% for 2020 reduction, 100% by 2021. The issue on the table... The issue on the table, as has been explained, is really the timing of when you want to get this completed. But my understanding was that there was no notification given to anyone on it.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Stark?
I'll offer an amendment to the motion. And as I understand it, you're calling for 2019 to be the termination date. I'll amend that to 2020 with no notification, other than the fact that with the taxation notices that go out, an indication that that program will be eliminated effective 2020.
So that's an amendment of the amendment?
Effective at the end of 2020.
That's already there. That's what it is now.
The current situation from the committee PM minutes. So if the committee PM minutes unamended by Counselor Loosely's motion and potential resolution, the vacancy rebates would cease effective the end of 2020. So no vacancy rebates at 2021. Counselor Loosely is looking to move that up a year effectively.
Okay, that's not what, the way I read the resolution. The resolution I read is 100% in 2021, effectively telling people that 2022, there will be no. So I'm obviously reading it incorrectly. So the...
Yeah, so there's no, sorry, there would be no, under this, this way, there's no documents. So it would all be...
Yes, okay.
So the motion that is presented by the committee, vacation, vacancy rebates are done at the end of 2020. The amendment to the motion, they are done at the end of this year. So if the amendment passes and the motion passes as amended, it's at the end of this year. There's no vacancy rebates.
I will support the motion then as amended.
Okay. So we've been asked for a recorded vote on this. If there's no other comments, I would get our randomizer ready, and we're starting with Counselor Romboutz.
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Veen?
Yes.
Warden Weaver? Yes. Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Okay.
Counselor Byrd?
Yes.
Counselor Bushy?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Counselor Hand?
Yes.
Counselor Loosely?
Yes.
Counselor Marriott?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Napper?
I'm going to make it a different word.
Is that a yes or no?
It's a yes.
So it will, the motion's been amended, so when we adopt the minutes, it's as amended through the minutes, right? Item seven, regarding service modernization funding.
Sorry, Mr. Warden, just on that issue. Put out highlights at these meetings, but can we put out a specific release on this issue? It was alluded to through the county, just on this issue alone, what's happening with the vacancy rebate?
Sorry, I can't, I...
Put out a specific release, not just the council highlights, a specific release out to the media on what we were doing with the vacancy rebate?
Okay.
So it's fully understood?
That was item seven. Item eight, information report, social services. Item nine, administration funding and housing services. Item 10, 11, 12, and 13 are in camera. Item 14, adjournment. Counselor Veen?
Thank you, Warden. I move the minutes as amended.
Seconder for that, Counselor Miller. All in favor of that? That's carried. Now that it's official and the motion's passed, I'd like to welcome and congratulate our new treasurer, Larry Palchero, on his first council meeting. So welcome. I guess, I don't know if I had to wait till that was official. It was fairly official, but now it's confirmed it'll be in the minute books, and we welcome you and look forward to the challenges and coming up in this next year, and I'm sure we'll do fine. So we got the minutes passed. We have no tabled items, notices of motion. Item A has been dealt with. Item B is a notice of motion that's been given, and I would ask Counselor Byrd if she'd like to speak to that, and if there's a seconder, we will deal with that.
Thank you, Warden Weaver.
14B.
Pardon?
14B, your notice of motion?
Yeah, so this is the AMAFRA one, right?
This is the, yep.
Okay. So I'm asking council, I'm asking for a resolution of council to ask staff to make an application to AMAFRA for the 40-year-old Drainage Act to be updated and more appropriate for the 21st century, including the following points. One, make it law that all easements for municipal drainage must be registered and included on title for every home and land section. Two, give notice to the Law Society and the Real Estate Board, obligating them, instead of the new home purchaser, to contact the appropriate municipality to check for any registered easements for the home or land in question. And three, as this is a digital age, to make sure every detail is recorded electronically so that lawyers, realtors, and the public can check these matters. So if I have a seconder, I'll explain a bit further.
There's a seconder for that motion. Counselor Bradley? Any questions to that motion? Counselor Broad?
I just need some clarification. What easement are you referring to? Because I got 550 drains, and I don't have any easements. So I guess I need to know, what are you referring to?
Through the chair. If somebody goes to buy a house, and you entrust your lawyer to carry out the title search, and they search everything way back, and they find there's no easements, there's no for utilities or whomever, and you think you're clear to buy it, so, and I've had lots of calls on this particular topic. So if you knew, with these unregistered easements, if you knew ahead of time, you wouldn't build a garage on that particular part of your land, or you wouldn't build any other construction on that land, because you don't know what you're going to hit, but you're not given that option. So if you were told upfront when you're about to purchase your property, there's an easement, whether it be municipal drainage or whatever, but if there's an easement right across your property in this position, then at least you'd have a choice whether you still buy the property or land, or whether you go ahead and just build your garages or whatever in other locations. So this is where this all started, with calls of this nature.
Call out Counselor Broad?
Yes, good, thank you. So we don't have easements on our municipal drains. They're a municipal drain. They're not an easement. Is that what you're referring to? So you want every municipal drain registered on title of every property, not an easement, but the actual drain itself, along with the electronic side of things, the actual drainage I got to speak against this. I have 550 municipal drains. Some of our properties have numerous drains attached to them. I could see this as a mega buck expense for the township of Donufemia. So definitely, I have to speak against this. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Napper?
I could maybe go along with one or two, but three, digitalized, I think there's a lot of municipalities are a couple of years away from having that service, and it's very onerous. And I think, I think we must have over 500 drains, too, at the last count, 538, I think it was, or something like that. And it's just going to be a ton of work. You know, the Drainage Act has worked for a lot of years out here in the municipal or out in the boonies here. And I guess maybe where it's causing some conflicts, that they don't really understand the Drainage Act, is when you get into the urban areas, nobody has water going anywhere and stuff like this here. So I think that's where, but no, it, I would support one and two, but not three.
Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. So I'd like to just explain a little bit further, because I've heard a lot of calls on this as well. So the Drainage Act currently says, "A bylaw passed under the Drainage Act, RSO 1980, obligates landowners within the watershed to meet the costs of construction and/or maintenance on a prorater basis as set out by the bylaw. Charges for drainage are placed against the property and are due and payable as municipal taxes. New rural landowners should also request drainage information. But if nothing is recorded or written down, how do residents and their lawyers know these rules? Two, also, you cannot expect homeowners and landowners to pay for drainage charges if they do not know there is an easement on their property in the first place." So under the current Drainage Act, these easements are not required to be registered on title. But unless they're registered on title, how will lawyers know to advise the prospective property purchaser? We pay lawyers to carry out the searches for us and to advise us of the results in order that we can have a choice whether to still purchase or not. As AMAFRA Minister Ernie Hardeman said recently, "These provisions in the Drainage Act have been in place for many decades." Well, in fact, it's almost four decades, 40 years. And just because something's been in place for this long doesn't make it correct. Forty years ago, everything was probably handwritten and a hard copy stored in a filing cabinet somewhere. No electronic databases as we have today for global searches. So therefore, this request today with these three sections, I think that because something's that old, we really need to revisit it and put in an application to AMAFRA to at least update it in any way we can, in accordance with my three requests here.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion's before us. Counselor Marriott?
I'd just like to clarify that when you say easement, we usually think of things like Union Gas or the power lines, but not municipal drains. It's hard to compare municipal drains to an easement. So I think there's terminology there, and I'm like Counselor Broad, I wouldn't support this on municipal drains.
If I could ask clarification, that would mean every property in Ontario would have an easement because their water goes someplace into a drain?
Just to respond to that question, the Drainage Act is legislation that permits a municipality to put together a municipal drain for the drainage of private property and public property. And once that's established, there's a drainage report provided by a drainage engineer that assesses the cost of construction and maintenance of that drain to all the benefiting landowners. And there's a bylaw that's adopted, so that's public information. And on a transaction, typically at this point in time, if there's a sale of a business or sale of a property, the buyer, it's always a buyer beware type of scenario, he or she or it, if it's a corporation, can always make inquiry of the municipality to say, hey, look, does these lands, the lands I'm looking to purchase, benefit from a municipal drain? And if so, they can ask for all the information, the drainage report, whatever it is, and any uptake or current maintenance and projected maintenance for that municipal drain. In this case, there's no easement currently registered on title for municipal drains. The reason for that is oftentimes, it's a big swath of your land that, or of private land that benefits from the municipal drain. Typically, easements, as Counselor Marriott has noted, are specifically delineated as a small part or sliver of land for specific purposes, like, for instance, utilities, access, roads, whatever they may be. And there's always a benefiting or dominant land to an easement, meaning that it's for the benefit of some other lands. That's why in currently, in the system, there is no registered easement or registered document. The information is publicly available, albeit not through the title registry system. It's available through a request of the municipality to say, hey, does land X benefit from a drainage to the municipal drain? And if so, where are we? What's the status? Am I going to expect a bill for maintenance in the next year, or two, or three, whatever it may be? So that's where we're at. The request here would, of course, per this warding, would ask for simply AMAFRA to look at that situation, possibly start thinking about easements. I doubt that AMAFRA or anybody at this point in time would move forward, even if you highlight the potential issue, because again, I think as Counselor Broad noted, municipal drains, there are a lot of properties that benefit from municipal drains, and to go and specifically define the legal description of those municipal drains and register on title to all of those properties in existence of a bylaw is going to be time and a costly initiative. So that's the one piece. The second piece of the motion that addresses, you know, notifying the Law Society and/or, secondly, the Real Estate Board, to have the purchaser disclose that information, that goes against common law that's been established since, you know, the age of time when we've been transferring property. It's always a buyer beware, and if there's an issue, a potential issue for municipal drain, then the buyer, either the buyer or the council can always ask the municipality to disclose as bylaw establishing the municipal drain. That's how the system works. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I guess I'm listening to the conversation here, and I think item number two is the one that is the real concern, is that, and I know that our legal advice just said that this is normal common law and all the rest, but where people get into trouble is someone that goes and purchases a piece of property and is not aware that there even, what municipal drains are involved in, and also the amount of easements on it. And I think it's item two is the one that's the operative here that really needs to be addressed. The other things, like number one, is something that really, and I agree with Counselor Broad and Counselor Marriott in regards to that, but I think it's putting the onus back on the person that's acting in your best interest to make sure that they've investigated everything for your best interest, and that's the missing link. And I think that number two has merit, if it's included registered easements in any municipal drains that may impact the potential purchaser's home or land in question. I think that's the words in my mind would satisfy me if it goes along in the same principle as what Counselor Byrd is asking for, because it puts that onus on the purchasers, the legal people, to make sure that they've covered that off for them, instead of them buying a property, and then all of a sudden, they go and then they get a notice of assessment six weeks down the road saying that they owe $25,000 on this municipal drain that they didn't even know that they were on. So I can appreciate where Counselor Byrd is coming from, and I could offer that as an amendment to her request, but eliminate one and essentially three at this time, because we aren't ready to go digital and everything either.
Counselor Stark?
With reference to the clerk's comments, when, let's assume that I'm applying for information relative to the drains, and I go to the county and ask for the information. Is that information digitized?
If I understand the question correctly, if a purchaser purchases property and wishes to ascertain and do some due diligence on that property and can ask a question about whether or not it benefits or is subject to any kind of municipal drain, if it's digitized, it really depends on the municipalities. But your bylaws are deemed to be public information. Your bylaws are laws which establishes the drainage legislation or your Drainage Act and the consequence of the engineers' drainage report, and as a result, you're presumed to know that by law, that there is a Drainage Act bylaw establishing a drain for that, in that area. So is it searchable electronically easily by a purchaser or purchaser's lawyer? Really depends on how the municipality wishes to essentially upload its bylaws or its GIS information or whatnot. But ultimately, when it comes to drainage legislation in terms of due diligence for property owners, it's much like asking a municipality to say, hey, are there outstanding orders on this property? Are there outstanding taxes owed on this property? And you would get that quite often. Your clerks would get that quite often at the municipal level. The next question is, that could be asked, of course, is whether or not any property benefits from the drainage legislation or is subject to the drainage legislation. It poses an issue. It catches buyers by surprise in what I would call urban areas. If I'm going to buy a property in Donufemia or any other rural area, I think, yeah, probably that my property benefits from a municipal drain. If I'm in Toronto or the city of Sarnia, that's not a given, and they may catch purchasers by surprise.
Okay. Counselor Napper?
Yeah, just a little update here. Every time a new drain is established by bylaw, there's a schedule of assessment comes with it, and that stays with that drain for the lifetime of that drain, and it proportions the amount, that percentage you pay on that drain. And then if there's any changes to the drain, that mount, they do a new schedule. So that's always available anytime you go in, but... So that's always available anytime you go in, but as far as going back to digitalize, we are not digitalizing. I talked to staff this morning, and it's going to cost a lot and a lot of effort to put everything digitalized on that record. But right now, you call the office and you ask the Hicks Drain, you go in there and they'll give you the scheduled assessment, everything there, they'll show you on the map. And sometimes when you buy property, you know, you've got to be buyer beware too. You know, you go out and see a great big ditch going through there, well, you might ask yourself and wonder what that is, and so.
Any other questions? Counsel Bird.
Thank you, Warden. So to be really clear then, so that I understand this, so if I was buying a house right now, or anybody else for that matter, if the lawyer called the municipality office, or the county office, would you specifically be able to give them the position of any particular municipal drain so that if you were planning on building another structure on your property, you weren't going to build right over this drain? I mean, would there be something that you would uphold that you could give the lawyer?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So right now, the county acts as a landowner like any other, like any other landowner under this act. So we pay money into municipal drains, we have municipal drains associated with our property, our roadways, which is the biggest function. This really rests at the local municipality, and it's their responsibility to be able to produce that information. I would, you know, I would argue that it's only as good as the records you have, and there's certain instances when you may not be fully aware, but on the whole, yes, anytime that we've contacted a municipality regarding specific information on a drain, we've received that promptly or it's been investigated promptly. So I think that's the expectation of the local municipality, that they are able to answer those questions at the local level, who are the appropriate custodian of those drainage systems.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Stark.
I believe Counsel Arnold proposed an amendment. I don't know if that received a second or if we're in fact going to deal with that amendment, but if it needs a, if it needs a second, I'm prepared to second that. Isolating number two effectively becomes the amended motion. Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that the only, the only statement in here is that we give notice to the Law Society and Real Estate Board of obligating them instead of new home purchaser to contact the appropriate municipality, check for any registered agents for the home or land in question. And the rest of the motion is, if we pass this amendment, that would be the entire motion. Counsel Arnold.
The other piece was after the registered easements, just in there, add in as well as any potential or any municipal drains that could potentially impact the home or land in question. So it places the onus instead of on the landowner, on their agent, which I think it does anyways, but currently, but that would make it a lot more clear.
Okay, so my understanding, if we pass this, what would be the action taken? We would send a letter to the Law Society asking for that?
I think we'd send a letter to OMAFRA, ask them to second the, review it, thing.
Okay.
So that I, double I, notice of motion, they could review the, maybe.
Okay, so the amendment takes out the first I and the third I, but the rest of the motion stands. Counsel Napper.
If you're going to leave that as an easement, all those easements have got to be registered, and you might have 75 people on that drain, that's going to put the cost of that drain up, cost that they don't normally bear, but now, like it's, it's a terrible cost like that, and the Drainage Act was put there, and I think it's worked us for 40 years, and thank you.
I think as I said, every property in Ontario is in a watershed, and the majority of those watersheds are in a municipal drain of some sort. Counsel Arnold.
Warden Weaver, just in response to Counsel Napper, number two does not say that all the drains are going to become registered as an easement. And I think there's a confusion here, the thinking that that implies that that's still going to happen. No, that's not the purpose of this. The purpose is to put the onus back on the legal people to make sure that they check with the local municipality instead of leaving it to the landowner to check so that there's another person. I think that's really given though in common law already. However, if we want clarification for everyone, then the lawyer that's representing me would do the check on my behalf, and it'd be, this would be what we would ask them to do. It has nothing to do with registering all the drains as an easement on title at this point, and that's why I was trying to do this, so it would eliminate that.
Okay.
And I don't like that number A part either. I don't want OMAFRA to review it. So it's just us asking them to make this part of it.
Okay, I need to know what the amendment is. Are we including A or are we not including A? We're just doing item two?
My motion or my amendment was to eliminate everything but item two.
Everything except item two.
Absolutely. And that we just put in there after the talks about for any registered easements or municipal So what it does is puts that onus back on the legal people that are representing the purchaser.
Okay. Counsel Rambout.
Point of order, I just, I believe Counsel Bird had a motion on the floor to begin with, and we did not deal with that motion.
This is an amendment to the motion that only, now we'll only be dealing with item two.
But Counsel Bird has not retracted her original motion.
Because the amendment hasn't been dealt with. And if the amendment passes, then we deal with the motion as amended.
So going as the second of the motion.
Yes.
That is exactly what my seconding entailed, and that is eliminating everything other than II. And speaking to that, it says to any registered easement. So if it isn't registered now, it's not an issue. So the concern that suddenly we're going to have to go out and register all these is mute.
Any registered easements or drains is what has been added, so. Counsel Bird.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just want to be sure that, so going back to what the clerk had said earlier about, my original request was to apply to OMAFRA, to ask them to update, you know, the Act. But if they don't update the Act and we don't go through that, if we eliminate that first part of my motion, who's going to give notice to the Law Society and the Real Estate Board?
It's going to be a request from the council.
That's a good question. Public policy law, you know, is really OMAFRA. So if we wrote to OMAFRA saying, look, there's a resolution of council, if it weren't you to disseminate this information to the Law Society and the Real Estate Board, because there's a lot of real people in Ontario, considering this, I think that's an actual doable action, resolution, versus just give notice to the Law Society and the Real Estate Board, because you get a lot of real people. The other secret, the man in the group for this election, it's really OMAFRA, but they would then, well, probably have, have the, the society, they don't need that for, so.
Okay, thank you. And then, of course, if it goes through OMAFRA, which is my original request, maybe if they think we're looking at it because it's 40 years old, maybe the other points will then follow when people are catching up and getting things digitized and everything else. So I think, as Counsel Arnold said, that number two is the most important part right now, so that it removes the obligation on, you know, from the homeowner to whoever's representing them in a land or home purchase. So my, I would like it to still go forward with the first part, A, and then only including part two under that.
So if we were to vote on that, if we were to vote on that, I have a note to suggest that, the original motion by, moved by Counsel Bird, seconded by Counsel Broad, admitted by Counsel Arnold, and stark, would be like, send force on as a people, OMAFRA, and A, looking to Drainage Act, point, double I, double I, and then to municipal drains after easement, and that's an actual item, actually, we did.
Right.
Okay. I missed everybody? Get everybody? Going to vote on the amendment?
Counsel Stump. I'm going to, through you to Counsel Arnold. Is that amendment for notification appropriate? I agree.
So, okay. The amendment to the motion is part two, II, and it's to add municipal drains at the end of the last line. All in favor of that amendment? Opposed?
Excuse me, Warden Weaver. You omitted the first part. You just said the amendment is for part two. The amendment is for A and plus part two.
No, it's, the amendment is for part two. The amendment, we're going to have to do this over again. I didn't catch the voting.
I'm sorry, I come back to my original question. If you just take two, part two alone.
Yep.
Whose responsibility is it to give notice to the Law Society and the Real Estate Board?
I think, Stefan.
So the amendment would be, and we send a note to OMAFRA as part A, which would be suggesting part A.
Okay.
But that note only suggests and only advocates for double I as an end of by.
No, I agree, but it's got to have that first part to notify. Okay, thank you.
So, all those in favor of the amendment, hold them high. Those opposed, has lost. We vote on the original motion. All those in favor of the original motion. Those opposed, that motion is lost. Item number C, it's a notice of motion, Counsel Bird. You present this motion if we can get a second. Well, or.
Sorry?
Item C.
Okay. So I'm asking for a resolution of council in the name of safety and protection to instruct staff to initiate an application to Infrastructure Ontario for a shared amount of what is needed to build one continuous seawall along the Brights Grove Public Shoreline, which is also the North Lampton Shoreline. Excuse me. So when it comes to safety, we must be proactive and not reactive, and on Thursday, October 17th, the Old Lake Shore Road was breached by the lake in four places when a serious shoreline erosion occurred. All access roads were blocked, and this was serious, but it could have been far more serious if the whole road had collapsed under the pressure. Old Lake Shore Road is the main escape route in an emergency, and the people need to know that it will always be there. Yes, there's Waterworks Side Road and Mandomin Side Road, but it's not a lot of good if you can't get to them. In July of this year, there was a problem at this same location, probably took about $2,500 to do a temporary fix, and now just three months later, a much bigger problem at the same location to the tune of approximately $40,000 for another temporary fix. This road is getting weaker all the time. And before anything further happens with the proposed development on the Old Crabbies Golf Course, I believe some serious considerations should be given to extending Hamilton Road eastward to give a safe secondary emergency route through the entire residential area in this location. And all the construction vehicles should be using that route instead of continuing to break up the Old Lake Shore Road. Two days after this latest breach, there were many very heavy construction vehicles all driving along this part of the road, vibrating on a long stretch of road that had almost collapsed just two days prior. This is absolutely ridiculous, and we must come up with some resolutions for road and people's safety, emergency exits, and a solid, stable east-west road through the middle of this entire development, namely extending Hamilton Road from Waterworks to Mandomin. Brights Grove Shoreline has been a topic of conversation for 46 years. With a huge storm took the entire road and bridge out then, but this year especially, it has been a constant dialogue with all the concerned parties to come up with a proper solution instead of a series of one-off Band-Aid patches. Stones and backfill may take care of imminent danger, but they're definitely not the long-term solution. All it takes is another bad storm or two and more of the strong north winds, and everything will be ripped out again. It costs more to be continuously carrying out the Band-Aid patches than it would to pay for one proper continuous seawall along the whole of the affected shoreline. Even with the breached road on Saturday, October 19th, there were three or four heavy construction trucks, all with one, all with, within one hour, driving along the Old Lake Shore Road, and this road is not meant to tolerate both bad storms and winds and construction vehicles. If these vehicles were bringing more stones to dump on the affected area, there are other routes to get there. Nobody seems to be communicating that to them. So it may cost about $35 million plus to build one continuous seawall, but with the lending opportunities that have already been made known to us by Infrastructure Ontario with the lowest ever interest rates, we would be foolish not to borrow and safely secure this area once and for all. I'm not an engineer, but I do realize there are probably many ways and material options to do this work, but my emphasis here is most strongly on doing this work all at the same time and not continuing with the Band-Aid work. After all, apart from all the reasons I've already mentioned, this is one of our valuable assets, not only for the city, but for the county too. It is our North Lampton Shoreline. Thank you.
Counsel Broad, are you willing to second this?
No, but I guess the question is, are we going to get a second for this bill?
I think we need a second before we go forward. We're going to have some discussion, that's always part of the procedures. If you want to vote on it, we can. Counsel Broad.
Thanks, Warden Weaver. I guess this is a city. Sarnia issue, I'm not sure why it's on the county floor, tall, so I'll definitely be voting against it because it, again, it's a city of Sarnia issue. Thank you.
I think, just for clarification, I think the more, the motion says for all of North Lampton Shoreline, but that goes all the way to Grand Bend. Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I was going to make the same motion or same notice that Flinton, Wyoming and Lampton Shores have also had serious erosion issues in the last few years with the high lake levels, and I don't see anywhere in this where it's including that infrastructure to go all the way up to Grand Bend and possibly even farther than that, but I didn't know that the lake here in it and at the end of Brights Grove, but maybe it does somewhere on the map.
You're asking for me to read? Call the question.
I'm asking that to be put right now on a vote on.
Call the question. All in favor of this motion? Opposed? That's defeated. Item 15 is other business. Counsel Loosely.
Thank you, Warden Bill. I think I've got some good news. It may be old news for some, but I just wanted to bring to council's attention to inform them that the Town of Petrolia and the County of Lampton were nominated for the Outstanding Business Achievement Awards to the Chamber of Commerce and the Social Responsibility Award, and I'd like to congratulate the County of Lampton on doing that. I also want to just mention that Petrolia was the only municipality that was nominated, and I want to go on to say I was thrilled that, to announce that Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts and Communication for the Town of Petrolia, won the Outstanding Customer Service Award in the individual out of 21 categories, and we're really quite proud of that. And just one more thing, you've probably heard this already, but today, in 1860, the first oil well was drilled in the village of Petrolia, and that was spelt with EA. So this is a special day for the Town of Petrolia. Thank you.
Congratulations on that. Thank you. I'm sure. Any other new business?
I would like some clarification. Was oil discovered in Petrolia or Oil Springs?
We're going to start that debate? The chili is hot, but we can have that debate if you'd like. We'll let those two take it outside. Is that, is that the way? Notice of bylaws.
Thank you. It's moved by Counsel Cook and seconded by Counsel Ferguson. The bylaws 36, 37, 38 of 2019 have circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
All in favor? Carrie.
It's moved by Counsel Ferguson and seconded by Counsel Cook. The bylaws 36, 37, 38 of 2019 have circulated, be taken as read a third and final time. The bylaws 36, 37, 38 of 2019 as circulated be taken as read a third and final time.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Councillor Hand, councillor Ferguson. We'll meet again on November 27th. And all in favor of that? That's carried. Don't forget to stay for chili, and I believe there are flu shots available. You can't get out of the building without your flu shot unless you have a bad cold. Appreciate them, so. Oh, Canada.[1682.13]